Okay, so we're gonna go right on time at six o'clock, which is about a minute. I want to make sure we get everything done on time. Okay, we have six o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Shandra to read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press in the current of Akerb County. Notice was also delivered that day to the Akerb Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and social media on Friday, July 10th, 2020.
Thank you. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Oh, does he have him? Do we hear him? There he is.
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan? Uh, Mrs. Summer? Mrs. Loggi?
I'm here.
Mrs. Bird? And I see Mrs. Summer. You can unmute?
I'm here.
I see Mrs. Loggi. Thank you, Mrs. Summer. If you can unmute, I see you. And Mrs. Bird, while she's trying to do that. You're on mute?
Oh, sorry, I was using the microphone. I'm present.
Thank you. And Mrs. Summer, I see you're unmuted?
Alright, I got it.
Alright. Alright, so we are missing Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. Alright.
I did hear from Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. She will be with us intermittently. She has to cover something at her school, but she'll be with us. And I know Mrs. Sullivan is here. I just saw her, so she must have just lost connectivity.
Yeah, Pete, Tamika and I were just on the executive session and had to get off and get back to this. So she's probably in that process right now, and she is at another meeting also.
Okay.
Very good. Alright. So I'm gonna now ask for a motion to go to executive, and then we'll switch over to the other invite. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion made.
Mr. Price, mic on his mic. May I have a second?
Lose his second.
There we go. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous? Alright, see you all on the other side. Good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock, so I am going to call our work session meeting for the month of July to order. I have my gavel here. I'm going to use it for the first time. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press in the current of Akerb Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Akerb Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and social media on Friday, July 10th, 2020.
Thank you very much. May we have roll call?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis is absent. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Mr. Price?
Mr. Price is here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Salagi?
Here.
Mrs. Bird?
Present.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here. That, the gavel, that was, that was for you, Shandra.
I appreciate that. We gave him the gavel when we went virtual, and it's the first time using it, so I do appreciate that. I did see Mrs. Gilbert Floyd. If she wants to say she's here, I did see her. I'll give her a minute. Maybe not right now. Okay.
Okay, so what we'll do then in the interim is, when you see the flag on your screen, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance together. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I just, before I turn it over for our superintendent's report, just a couple of quick remarks. I want to welcome everyone again to our, our July work session meeting. I first want to say a, a quick word about our high school graduation ceremonies, which took place last week. I, I thought they were wonderful. I want to thank Ms. Connor, her staff at the high school, Dr. Gruccio, and not only the staff at the high school, so many of our teachers and other, other staff members who were just there to volunteer to help out. I want to thank everyone who pitched in to make that a nice event. While we, we all know it wasn't the graduation we would have liked to have had under normal circumstances. Under these difficult circumstances, I think the two ceremonies turned out to be very, very meaningful and I hope enjoyable for our students and our families. It was really a pleasure for me to, you know, to get to greet the students. And they seemed to, to, to really enjoy, enjoy the day's activities. We couldn't shake hands. We had to be socially distanced, but we were able to congratulate each of them as they came up. And then at the later ceremony, those who came with their families. So, you know, thank you again to everyone involved with that. I want to announce to everyone that today is Ms. Amy Summer's birthday. Can we all wish her a happy birthday? It's nothing like a birthday. It's the best, right?
Happy birthday.
And then finally, I just want to reiterate. So we are headed now into some challenging times. Last year was a very, very difficult year for us to complete, but our road back to school is gonna be even more difficult. So I'm going to ask, as I did last week, I'm gonna ask everyone who's on this call. I'm gonna ask everyone who's viewing live or listening live or will watch this after. Please, we all need to work together to make this happen. However it looks for us to get back, back to school in the fall. So I'm gonna ask for everyone's cooperation. We've, we've just gotta work together. So, and in line with that, I did mention a little bit earlier in the year, I'm gonna need board members to please be flexible with their schedules. We're, we're going to have to meet more. Dr. Gruccio is gonna talk about in her superintendent's report, some of the things that we're gonna be doing. So at, at the end of that, I'm gonna ask tonight that we, we ask, that we schedule an additional meeting for Tuesday, July 28th. But there may be a need for even more meetings in addition to that. Because priority one now is going to be our road back. So with those words, thank you all for coming again, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Gruccio for her report.
Make sure I have volume here. Can anybody hear me? Oh, boy. Can you hear me? Yes. Alright, that's a good start. Okay, let me see where I am. Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to another virtual work session. I have a few updates this evening, and I too would like to begin with graduation. And I, I have to echo Mr. Castellano's sentiments and say, what a beautiful day, a wonderful ceremony. And let me tell you, absolutely amazing students. Along with that, a helpful and passionate faculty and administration, and the event was an overall success. So this is yet another example of how our Akerb Township family comes together to make us very proud. A huge shout out to the class of 2020. Once again, congratulations. I'm still in awe over how well behaved and how respectful everybody was. And I say it all the time, and I'll say it again, we have the best students. There was no rehearsal for this ceremony, and when you get the opportunity to see it, I mean, it's in entirety. You'll see that our students walked on the field, they followed the lead of their class advisor, sat quietly through many speeches, came to the podium, got their diploma cover, got their picture taken, walked back to the seats, turned the tassels, and waited to be dismissed at the end. Absolutely amazing. I'm so proud of them. And that second ceremony was just as special, where students walked in with their families, which was very touching. They were introduced, they received their diploma cover, and had their picture taken, returned to their family. All students, both ceremonies were in masks, and hashtag EHT cried all the way. Kudos to the high school team for planning and facilitating this event. Update number two, the NJSA, the government body of high school sports, announced on Friday, July 10th, they released their current plan called Model One, which is a delayed fall season. Again, lots of rumors gone around. It was gonna be canceled. It was gonna be delayed to January. But it looks like they have a plan that's flexible to the developments of COVID-19, and it provides for the school administration a time to open school. So I just want to make it clear that this practice session, that people think, or calling practice, is a workout session. It's a summer workout schedule, and that will begin on July 27th for football and August 3rd for other sports and marching band, and they are workouts. So it's two days a week, no more than an hour and a half, have to be supervised by a coach, and kids have to be in masks, temperature checks, health screens, the whole bit. And it's more of, if you could just picture, maybe, you know, running, doing agility sprints and exercises that way. No equipment. Equipment cannot be shared. So it's really not a full-blown practice. And NJSA is adamant about us adhering to that Phase One guideline, or we could face disqualification. So our athletes are aware, I just checked with Mr. Pellegrino, that the coaches were contacted. They are submitting their plans to the athletic director that's due at the end of this week, and then we'll move forward. So parents should be hearing more communication as to when, where, because we have to coordinate it. So like, you know, certain teams have to be on, can't be on the turf at the same time and in the area at the same time. So our regular season practices will commence on September 14th. So there's a hiatus between two weeks, between August 29th and September 13th, where no in-person practices. And this is where the state wants to give schools the opportunity to get open and up and running. So no scrimmages, no games, no practices for those two weeks. All communications will be virtual from coaches to players. One thing that they put in the plan that's important for all to know, there will be no long trips, sort of like Major League Baseball's doing. They're just playing in their division, not traveling out to California to play the West Coast. No out-of-state trips or state championships. So if you'd like to view the model, please see the district newsletter. I've included that model in the, at the bottom. Now let's move on to the road back. What I'd like to do is attempt to present here a PowerPoint presentation, which I can see right now, but you can't. So that's not the way we do it. Hang on a second. It's different. I have all these people.
There it is.
That's not it. That's, that's IT putting up my next presentation. I was gonna take this opportunity to be tech savvy. So, let's see, present now, right? Why my entire screen?
And then click it in the box. Click inside the box.
I'm clicking inside what box?
When it brings up the screen.
Bring up a screen. It says, "Present now." So I'm gonna present, and it says my entire screen.
Or pick a window. You can probably pick a window, and you'll see different options.
Hi, Kevin.
Hello.
How you doing?
I'm good. So if you do present now, you should see a window?
Yes.
And do you see, and you should see multiple screens within that window, and you might be able to see your presentation if you have it up somewhere?
Yeah, I have it up somewhere, but it's behind the screens here. So... I don't know what to do. Present. I have it up. Okay. Can you see it now?
No.
No. Okay, we're doing real good here. See, superintendent's not real tech savvy.
If you do present now, and then you'll see three options: your entire screen, a window, or a tab.
Oh, there you go. Chrome tab.
And then pick one of them. If you have it in a tab...
I found it. I found it.
Select that tab, and there you go. You got it.
I got it. Got it. It works. I mean, I practiced it earlier, too.
Make sure you go into present mode. There you go. You're good.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, here we go. Our road-to-back update that I'll share with the board. This is the document. It's a 104-page document to restart and recovery, plan for the education of our students. It's from the Department of Education. It's quite lengthy. I've shared it with all our constituents and all our stakeholders. It's a happy read, but it's a little confusing, and we hear that there may be some changes coming down the line. So I wanted to share a timeline. This is a timeline I shared with the Board of Education in my weekly update, but I wanted to share with the public and let them know that, you know, we have been working. We have been talking about, you know, this road back, if we're, when we're going back to school. What, what will it look like, and when will we get direction? So back on June 24th, had those discussions in the county roundtable meeting, and we were told to just hold up and wait until we receive plans, guidance from the Department of Ed. And we did on the 26th, and from there, it was just a continuation of sharing, discussing, planning, and, and, you know, discussions, I would say. How, how we're gonna roll this out, who we're gonna roll it out to. And we, we looked at the document, we dissected it, and we decided to come up with committees that we have stakeholders on board. So when July came around, we had administrators meeting, superintendent's roundtable. This is where we met with the Department of Health and got some guidance there. Central office meeting teams, and then we had the administration collaborate on their ideas and concerns. And Google is great. This is where you can just dump stuff in the document, and everyone could read, and they get a feel real quick for what everybody's feeling. Superintendents meet weekly. We have central office team meets almost every other day. And our administrators were assigned to subcommittees. They have discussions on ideas and resources. And that we did was we rolled out our subcommittee. So this weekend, we spent a lot of time in, looking at data, getting ourselves together in terms of one voice, one message, sending out emails as soon as we could, and that was based on the survey, the, the social media communications that we had for people to sign up. And we did have a previous sign-up, and I communicated with the community through the district newsletter and a social media post, and communicated to the faculty through email. But I wanted to give one last chance to make sure everybody had the opportunity to join us, and that happened over the weekend. And I thank everybody for signing up and for your interest and for wanting to be a part of our team. So here we are, in this week, July 13th. I sent a survey out to teachers for on virtual teaching and learning. So that data that we gleaned from the teacher survey will assist us as well with our, building our plan. So we're waiting for that survey, and I'll be sharing a parent survey after this presentation. On July 13th, administrators started contacting stakeholders to announce their meeting dates. And this week, the meetings are occurring. There are 11 different committees. They go, right here, I've shared the different committees and the dates and times of their meetings. So from academic supports, which is also a wraparound, it has to do with after-school, has to do with multi-tiered system supports for students, athletics, fine and performing arts, elementary scheduling. You have middle school and high school scheduling in there, food and dining services, health and safety screening, cleaning, technology committee, student attendance, virtual teaching and learning, and transportation. So I'm very proud of the administrators and staff that took part in getting this together and organizing these meetings. Looks like they got them all in this week, which is great. What I want to discuss here is the possibility, and I'm, I'm sharing it, this is a work session, with the Board of Education for possible proposal that would be on next week's board meeting, is to, we're looking at the district calendar, alright? So September 1 is our Teachers Professional Learning Day. And then the students come in on September 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. They're half-days on the calendar now, and then the teachers have the Teacher Professional Learning Day in the second half of the day. So with all this going on, I had discussion with our teachers' union, and they, they approve of this proposal. Is to take the November 3rd and 4th Professional Learning Days and move them to September 2nd and 3rd. So right now, our students would, would start school on September 4th. This gives our staff time to come in, get familiar with what I assume is gonna be a new environment, get them trained on anything that they need to be trained on, PPEs, teaching in a different setting, whatever it may be, whatever comes out of our plan. And I'll know more at the conclusion of this week, but I just want to give the boards a heads up, and I can even open it up for, for discussion, but I want you to hear what I'm thinking. So what's next and what comes out of all this planning? So you have these meetings. Everyone has the guidance of the road back. I know there's questions, are we opening, are we not? Is it virtual? Right now, the governor has directed us, directed us to open schools and have a virtual plan for a study closure, okay? So there are the things that we know we have to do, and then there's all the other elements, because it's a huge puzzle. One affects the other. So when you build a schedule, it's gonna affect transportation. It's gonna affect food. It's gonna affect the health screenings. So we will get there, and this is what happens next. So meetings occur. Every meeting's gonna be recorded. So if I miss one, I can go, and I have principals that already sent me the recordings of their meetings. I can see what, what happened, what went on in that meeting. Meetings have minutes that are gonna be shared, and ideas that are gonna be shared. Ministers head of the doc where they're gonna load their, their ideas into that. And then we're gonna, we're gonna analyze the qualitative data that we have. Then we want to convene a road back to school committee with reps and Board of Education members as well. So each committee has a facilitator, who is an administrator, but is also gonna have one to two representatives from their committee, the stakeholders. It could be parents, teachers, you know, however that turns out, both. And we are going to come together as one committee to review the plan, okay, or plans, okay, proposals, ideas. And then once this committee decides upon, you know, Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, Plan E, whatever, comes out of this data that we're collecting, then we'll share it with the public, you know, through a meeting, social media. We'll submit to the New Jersey Board of, Department of Ed. And then that's where I see a possible survey happening. So I'm gonna give just the hypothetical scenario. So we may be surveying, are you comfortable coming back to school? Do you need transportation? Those kind of questions. I know you're seeing surveys out there. I see them myself from different states, different school districts, but I feel we need to have a plan first, so someone could look at that plan and say, okay, well, they're gonna do XYZ, and I'm comfortable with that. So, yes, my kids go into it, or XYZ. I'm not comfortable with that. So we will get there. I like, it is a road, and we on the road, and we're, we're driving long. But there's different stops we have to take on our way there. So that is my presentation on the road back. Included here is that special board meeting that Mr. Castellano spoke about on July 28th. And this would be the time, hopefully, you know, that fits in the timeline, that we're ready to work together as a collaborative group to come up with that plan that has to be shared. Any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
I, I might have missed it, but do we have any, oh, that's, can you keep it on?
Yeah, oop, that one.
Perfect. Do, do we have any plans to add a special education committee? Because then the needs of that group is different for virtual and in-school instruction.
Yeah, that's gonna fall under the academic supports, and it's also gonna move through a lot of the different ones. So the virtual teaching and learning, it's definitely gonna move into that. Transportation, we know it's in, in that area in terms of the different services that we have there. But yeah, the academic supports committee, it's definitely gonna focus on that. The social-emotional supports as kids and after-school services and before-school services. But definitely through virtual teaching and learning, it's all embedded there. It definitely covered.
If I may add, Dr. Gruccio, we had our facilities meeting and health and safety, and it definitely came up during that meeting as well. I think it's interlinked.
Yeah, we did talk about it as administrators, that, you know, to keep it in mind, because it's gonna be in, falling in all those areas. Scheduling as well, so. Okay?
Any other board members' questions or comments on our, our plan?
You're presenting to everyone. Okay. I have to stop presenting, right? That part. Stop. Alright. Good?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you for that, Kim.
Okay, now, my technology friends, I have another, another quick presentation to go through. Okay, now I'm gonna go through the, the virtual teaching and learning parent survey. If IT could put that up, please. There we go. Okay. This is a survey that was released, oh geez, three, four weeks ago, even before any of this road back to school came through. Is it up?
You're not seeing it, Kim?
No. The board's not seeing it either. Chris, he is.
You're presenting the meeting, not the actual slideshow, that's all. There you go.
There we go.
There you go. Sorry about that.
Alright, and you'll move those for me, right? Because I'm going quick.
Correct. I'll move it. Just kinda.
Okay. This is a lengthy presentation, and it was sent ahead of time, so folks could see through, see what the data was. But again, this was a survey that was put out to the parents before the, the road back to school. And it, it gives us an idea of how we did with virtual teaching and learning. And this is data that the administration is gonna use to, and I've said this before, feedback makes us better. Feedback gives us areas that need to be addressed. Feedback makes us aware of concerns. Some of this, some of the concerns, we've been working with this document for a couple of days now. And some of the information that I gleaned from this, we were aware of prior to. So a lot of it's been addressed. Some of it needs to still be addressed. But again, it makes us better, and it's gonna help us now that we're on this road back to school. So I'm gonna just start off by saying, overall, it was positive. It, it was great. Keep, keep flipping. Some of them are just, how many students do you have? School-age students? Do you have access? And it was, the green means good. Could you just go back one? That was a little... And it was, uh, the green means good. Um, could you just go back one? That was a little fast. Okay, do you think our schedules, um, child knows how to access the Google meets every day? Positive. Very positive. Go ahead. Any issues with parental filters? In this case, no, um, is, is the negative, but it is positive for us. They, m- most folks didn't have po- um, have problems. Go ahead. Virtual schedules were effective. Go ahead. Um, are you confident your child's ready for the next grade level? So you see the green, um, positive. Go ahead. What time of the day worked best? This is great information for our scheduling committees. Okay, go ahead. And it's by grade levels. So you saw the K to one, the two to three. Keep going. You have a four, five, and six, eight, and mid-morning is winning the race. Okay, all right. So how would you rate the academic screen time for your child? Most folks said just right. Contents relevant? New assignments and due dates were posted during virtual instruction class time? Majorities, yes. Go ahead. Did your child log online for every class meeting? Always, sometimes, never? Good percentage for always. Um, if your child was unable to join on that given day, uh, did, do you find it susceptible substitutes for in-class instruction and discussion? So you have data that's here. Um, just keep in mind that there was live instruction, but there was also recorded instruction. Okay, for students that could not make it live. Go ahead. Do you follow the district's social media posts? It's glad to see that most people do. Check our district website. Most people do, and I encourage everyone to do so. That's where we're communicating. Um, were you able to contact your child's teachers easily? Good to see that it, um, it's green, positive. Go ahead. During virtual instructions, which platforms were an effective source of communication? And Google Classroom, um, seems to, uh, is the, the highest and, and the, um, most popular response. And, um, I just went to pause here for a second to say that I, we have been doing research for the past two, three months on different platforms, um, learning platforms, uh, virtual classroom platforms. If you've taken an online course, you've heard of Blackboard. Um, we've, we've looked at a few and the consensus is that Google Classroom for the, for the price, which is free right now, um, meets our needs. They are going to take some of the other, um, particulars that, um, and resources that the other, some of the other companies have and build it into the Google Classroom. So they can improve because again, they take feedback and they're working to improve their product. So, um, we're looking forward to see what some of the new add-ons are, some of the new features are. But it seems to be that our folks, um, teachers and parents, um, like the Google Classroom. Go ahead. Type of learning does your child prefer? Live sessions versus the pre-recorded? So our children and parents appreciate it, um, in grades K to one, live sessions. You can move through these because it's going to go by grade level, live session, four, five, live session, nine to twelve, middle school, live sessions were, um, are popular and that's what is preferred. Um, teachers and students build, um, relationships, um, you know, physical education, world languages in particular. Uh, it's easy for this, the, the teacher in that classroom to see, um, what's going on with the student and communicate with the student. So, um, so that's good to know as we plan forward. How pleased were you with your child's virtual learning experience? We got, um, um, pleased and very pleased to be a popular, um, responses. Go ahead. What are your major challenges during virtual learning? These are responses, um, because of the, the, the nature of the question. So people wrote in responses, um, as we work forth, forward through this, um, I want to quantify this data a little bit more and see, and then list it for you, list it for the public and listen for the committees that are working, um, some of the popular answers and how that works. So we didn't get to that part yet. What additional supports could you have used with help in virtual learning? Check all that supply, that applies, um, and it looks like a assistance with helping students with work. All right, so we're going to take that into consideration when we move forward. Okay? So that is, that's quick in a nutshell, what the survey, um, told us overall. It's a positive survey. As I said, there is some, um, digging to do, some work to do on, on the feedback that we received. Um, there's a survey that goes out, that went out for teachers, very similar in the same line. So we'll take that data and we'll see where we are. But, um, I just wanted to share that with you and let you know that's the work that we're doing. Um, you know, in the offices and just trying to get better and better at what we do. So that is the end of my report, Mr. Castellano.
Thank you, Dr. Gruchio, for that. Um, certainly, uh, it tells us that we did a good job with virtual learning. There's always areas for improvement in anything you do and those are noted. And we're going to work on it, but overall, you know, I think that data shows, um, what we all experienced. I have a junior in the high school and, you know, our experience was extremely positive. And I think the data reflects that. And so I want to see if any other, if any board members have any uh, questions or comments on the virtual learning piece. Any board members?
Uh, Mr. Yes, Mike. President, I have a question in regards.
Sure.
Yeah, in regards to, um, it's for the superintendent, Dr. Gruchio. Uh, during home instruction, did we have any students not participating in virtual learning? And, uh, if so, if yes, how many, which schools and where? And when, I'm sorry.
Mr. Price, um, that's a.
Basically, I won't. Participating and if.
Is he, are you, are, are you okay? Uh, he's frozen. Can you hear me?
Am I frozen?
To me you are. I don't know, maybe you're, um, moving. As long as you can hear me, we're good. Okay? Okay, um, that's, um, the loaded question.
Did you hear my question?
Yeah, I did. I did. I heard your question. Um, I don't know if you got my response this, this afternoon. Um, I know that was a, a question, um, from the board. That we answer and I'm going to ask, um, Mr. Santilli to weigh in a little bit. But before I do that, um, I, I just want you to know that our approach was from a social emotional lens, um, where we, our students, if they, and I think I explained this, that when they didn't show up, um, or if they didn't log in, we sent someone to the house or we made phone calls, um, to see if they were okay. So it was by the classrooms and by the teachers. So if you didn't show up for a couple of days, they would let us know. And then we, we would address that. So right now I could not give you numbers of grade levels or classrooms, um, or schools in terms of who was absent and, and who, who, who was, who was there. Because we had live instruction and then we had recorded instruction. So if I didn't show up, um, at eight o'clock today for my math class, maybe I watched it at four o'clock or eight o'clock at night. Okay, and then the teacher would follow up the next time that they saw that class, which in virtual school was not the next day. It was the not next session or next, maybe the next week that that person met the class. So, Mr. Santilli, if you could just.
Well, I kind of think it's important. I, I think. We need to know these, uh, these facts and figures. I'd like to have more information on it. Basically what I asked you and I, I just want to hear some numbers.
Right, well, I don't have numbers in front of me now to share with you. Mr. Santilli can, can share from the, um, lens of the social emotional piece and what they did. Um, I hear what you're saying in terms of attendance. Every school had, took attendance a different way. Every school ran their virtual school a different way. We do have an attendance committee, um, as, as part of our road back and, um.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Oh yeah, I'm aware of that. I'm serving on that too. So I'll be attending that in the morning, the road back attendance meeting.
Right, so we can get recommendations.
I'm not talking. I'm talking about participation in virtual learning, not so much the attendant.
Right, oh, it was high. It just says that data showed participation was high. I can go back to the presentation, but Mr. Santilli, you may have that up and have some numbers.
Yes, so.
Please.
Basically, uh, it was, it was a three-pronged approach. Um, so for instance, one of the things that we had to do was initially when we went to the closure for COVID, um, we had to submit a plan to the county office. That initial plan, um, wasn't, you know, let's say too, um, robust. Uh, it was just, uh, the requirements that they had at that time. When we got closer to spring break, sometime around April, um, additional requirements came out. As you know, there were more executive orders that were part of that. And ultimately what ended up happening was that, um, there were more, more components and requirements that were required of our emergency management plan. One of those things was, of course, virtual learning as well as attendance. Um, what this state had said, and it was also part of, um, a, a change in, in the law, it really came down to that if students were participating virtually in instruction, um, and the student in the school district didn't have any, um, any, any real reason to believe that a student wasn't participating, then students would be, um, marked as present for the day. So ultimately, um, our students were participating and the three-pronged approach that we're talking about was put into place and approved by, of course, the county office as part of our emergency plan. So for instance, the first layer of that was the classroom teacher. So the classroom teacher, if they noticed that a student wasn't on a live session or weren't completing work virtually, such as through one of our online platforms with, uh, Google Classroom or Mobi Max, for instance, then they would be reaching out to the parents. Um, and, and majority of time that would rectify the situation. Then the next layer was that we had, uh, teachers and staff members then communicating to administration. Administration, if in, you know, by chance, did get a communication in regards to students that maybe weren't connecting with us, then of course they would try to reach out. At times, um, I even know that some of our administrators went to students' homes. I know of personal cases where that happened, um, to make sure that they were doing wellness checks. In addition to that, um, if in fact we had a child that we really had a concern about, that we weren't able to get a response from a parent or guardian, um, then we, uh, utilized our services as central registration. I worked with that team very closely and they did an excellent job as attendance transparency officers. Um, not just also communicating with the homes, but physically going to the homes, following proper protocols. And rather than doing what we called a residency check, we turned their jobs and roles into a wellness check. Um, and again, um, making sure first and foremost that students were safe, but also they were making sure that they had, for equity purposes, they had, um, what they needed to connect with us. Um, when we're talking about the first month of closure, um, obviously we started off, if you recall, with even paper packets at that time. And ultimately then we transitioned into this really true robust virtual platform. So when they did a wellness check, they actually, in the, um, vehicle, district car, they even took with them Chromebooks and charging cords, just in the, in the case that a parent had communicated to them that, hey, by the way, yeah, we've been trying to, uh, connect, but I have, you know, for instance, three children in the home and it's very difficult. So we would then provide that support. So just some examples, but of course, you know, during this time, um, be- because of all those layers and being able to transition into that, um, we did have strong participation and, and really all students were connecting, um, with us in some capacity, whatever was, was required.
Uh, Mr. Castellano, I have a follow-up question, two follow-up questions.
Sure.
Thank you. So, um, as far as attendance is concerned, um, I'm alarmed that all the schools had different processes. Because I think that when it comes to conferencing with parents, having data as to how many times your child attended a virtual, um, learning session or, or logged on to Google Classroom, because all of that stuff is trackable through these websites that we're using. If, if, if you send out a recorded video of a Zoom call that morning, you can see who's viewed it. So I know for my district that I am employed, while we weren't required necessarily to take attendance, we still had a live, um, Google Sheets that we would update throughout the day, tracking our students. And that served as a benefit so that we knew we were reaching our students and meeting IEP goals and also making sure that we're meeting with our, our RTI students the way we are supposed to. So I think that going into these committees and over the next few weeks, we need to have a plan that is consistent across the board so that we're assuring our students are, um, in frequent contact with our teachers and that they're not just, um, you know, phoning it in really. We need to make sure that we're following their IEPs and we need to account for that somehow because whether we have conferences later on that are virtual or in person, that information is very vital when you're communicating with a parent of a student who might be struggling. Additionally, um, my follow-up question, uh, is regarding the computers you have brought up. Um, what is our plan for those families that do have devices? However, those devices are shared with, say, a parent who's working from home or another, uh, child? Like, are we giving more than one device to a family in need or is it, you get one and how are we dealing with that data from our survey?
So one of the things that we would do is, uh, I could tell you from experience over the last few months during the closure, how we handled it. Um, and then of course with the road back planning, those are all conversations that we're having in regards to how we would, of course, handle it better. I think, you know, I probably would, would just, um, echo Mr. Castellano's words in the sense that, you know, it's kind of the mentality of going from good to great. You know, we've been through this for a few months. We know what's works. We know what doesn't work, um, and we know what we can do better. Um, but ultimately, I, I can tell you that when requests came in and oftentimes, and there was a process for that too. Oftentimes what would happen is a request would come in from a family, either to a teacher, um, whether through ClassDojo or through Google Classroom. Um, and then that request would be forwarded to a building administrator. They had a Google form to fill out to help me formalize that process. And they would complete a Google form for a Chromebook request. And oftentimes, for instance, if it was a family that had three or more, um, children in the home and they were making that request, then we would actually deliver a Chromebook to the household, um, so that way they would then have two. Uh, we were not, we were not denying those requests, of course. Um, but again, I think it's something for us to consider when we're having these conversations about what September's going to look like. Um, and I think that's going to be a little bit easier once we know, um, how things will transition in regards to in-person instruction versus virtual. And also to, um, just kind of also share in regards to your concerns with the virtual piece and, and the difference with accountability. Um, you know, when we made adjustments to the schedule, part of the reasons why we made some adjustments for the virtual schedule was to also meet the needs of, of the individual students. And what we noticed was that, um, it wasn't just going to be about, um, those live Google sessions or recorded Google sessions. It was going to be more about trying to focus on individualizing, uh, individualizing instruction and, and really meeting the needs of individual students. That's when we started to create, um, more time on task with, let's say, small group instruction. Um, also where we were having, um, time set aside for teachers to be able to meet with students. Um, so there were different things broken down in those virtual schedules. Um, and we tried to make it as user-friendly as possible, not just for the students, but also, um, for the parents. And that's where we were color coding everything, if you recall, um, without pulling up one of those samples to show you. Um, there were different colors for that purpose. Like I remember green was for the small group instruction. And for instance, if I was a teacher, I would target, if I had twenty students in my class, I would target a handful. And then whenever that rotation occurred, I'd want to meet with those particular students. Um, and then of course where I, I believe that the, you know, different levels were of course meeting with, um, student check-ins as well. So all those, those were opportunities for us to really make sure we knew where our students were. Um, and coupled with that, we were still also trying to maintain the work that we've done, um, with response to intervention. And right now, part of all the road back planning, um, while all this is going on, we are also compiling data and, um, working very hard at making sure that we have, um, prepared ourselves for what, um, deficiencies students may be coming to us with in September. And we want to prepare for that and mainly because we don't want to just abandon that work that we've done, um, with that work for response to intervention moving into September. And that's also happening right now too.
That was a big piece of the progress monitoring initiative that we rolled out in, in April. Um, first checking, you know, uh, which kid, who, what kids needed what, um, using the RTI process to go through, um, and, and assist them and then looking at the standards that were, that were met, that were not met. Now we're looking at that day, data that we, um, you know, we gleaned from that process and that'll help us build, um, as we move towards either virtual learning or, uh, uh, definitely closing the gap that we need to get, we need, that we need to do. But we need, I said it back in, in, in April, we need to figure out what that gap is. And by that, having that progress monitoring, a process, um, i- it's giving us that data that we're looking at now. And I know, Mr. Santilli, you're working with. And I know, Mr. Santilli, you're working with Ms. Moss on that as we speak. And she has data on the subgroup, on the small groups and the small learning groups. And I know it's a lot, but you're breaking it down and I see you working every day. So thank you. K to three, I know was extremely successful, so I just want to put that out, out there, the way that the RTI process worked there. So that, I know I've seen some of that data and I was impressed with that so far. So keep sharing.
Okay. So the final piece that I just want to put a, start where I began, then can we solidify? I'm gonna, if it's okay with board members, I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to go ahead and announce that meeting July 28th. I think 6:00 PM and I, I don't believe there'd be any need for executive. It would be advertised as a special meeting. And I'll, I'll rely on Ms. Haukelko if, for the, the format of the announcement.
Pete, I believe when we do that, we have to go at the seven o'clock time for the public to be consistent with our times. We decided that a few months ago.
If, if you do. Well, that's true.
Yeah, I think the public is.
We have done that. So, you know, I was just trying to think in terms of giving us more, more work time. But do, you know, do we need an executive? Would be, so, but we could certainly move back to seven.
Well, I'm just concerned about the public being, you know, inconsistent with what we do. I agree. I'd rather start at six personally, but I don't think, I think we shared this when we made the calendar or some decisions earlier in the year that we wanted to be consistent with that time.
My suggestion would be if the board does feel strongly about starting earlier due to the amount of time, because this is a special circumstance, because COVID-19 is going on, because we're virtual. If we provide plenty of public notice, public information out there on our website, on our Facebook page, that's certainly something that we could really push that this special meeting is at this time for that purpose. That would be up to the board to decide.
That's great with me. I have no problem with that.
I mean, I'm flexible. I just, you know, want to make sure that we meet that evening and get done what we need to get to, get, get done, what we need to get done. And keep in mind, we may need more meetings, folks. So.
Mr. Castellano, just for the advertisement and, and Mrs. Haukelko, it'll be a special meeting, 6:00 PM, July 28th, virtual. And the purpose will be to work on the NJ DOE Roadback Plan. Is that a good descriptor? Or do you want a different, different language there?
Yes, I can email you something, Chandra.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Okay. So we're moving now to finance and operations. I know there wasn't a committee meeting, but I'm going to see Chandra if you have anything you'd like to report or even our chair may have something to report or discuss.
I'd just like to go over what is going to be from action up for next week, if we have a minute. Basically, the standard monthly reports, you will see this month of July, we usually have May and June together as we have to submit June by August 1st to the county office. June will be uploaded on Friday for next week's review. We also have one here, working with different universities for student placement. We have a row agreement with Rowan and with Stockton for action. We have the college board's participation program for a resolution to renew with them to do placement testing for high school students. There's also a resolution for our meal program for next year with private school. We have some out-of-district tuition placements. We're starting to get those contracts in. Happy to report, we met today with Special Ed and we are looking at $400,000 in savings from out-of-district placements. We were able to, over the summertime, work very hard and identify students that either can come back, transition back. Some students moved away, so we didn't have to work too hard. But overall, it was, we're very pleased to report that helped, helped us with our budget for this year. The IDEA and the 21st Century Grant have been officially approved by the county, excuse me, by the DOE. So those are a fraction to accept. Last, we have a parent contract for transportation. And again, to reiterate, we have some questions from the board regarding, will that be paid if we go virtual? And that is only paid when we actually have live in-person sessions. Other questions that came from the board members to be discussed during this meeting have to deal with some of the transfers. This month and next month are heavy with transfers, just as we align up our budget to close out the books. We had to do some transfers to fund some transitional things that happened towards the end of the year. Bills list questions. We had a membership renewal that was asked about. Insight, we did actually settle. It was a resolution at the last board meeting. It equated to 17% of what we would have paid April, May and June, based on last April, May and June's bills. They were able to settle with us for 17% of what would have been paid minus what we actually did use them for, because we actually did use them for substitute services during the closure. Where, the water bills were a little high in May, because basically, we started irrigating again. So it's low throughout the winter and early spring. And then we start irrigating again come May. So that was the few questions that came from the board for the finance department. That's why I had on my list. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Sullivan, anything you'd like to add?
No. They've done, Chandra's done a great job in, in saving us a tremendous amount of money and I'm real proud of what she's done.
Very good. We will now move to our curriculum report to Ms. Summer.
Okay, good evening. On July 7th, the curriculum committee met virtually in attendance for myself, Mr. Price, Mr. Delibarca, Mr. Kadetsky, Ms. Hannigan and Mr. Santilli. The following items will be needing board approval. A theater teacher for kindergarten is being proposed. This position is for kindergarten students only and will take the place of having art as a special. The position will be directly tied to literacy. The district would also like to utilize a digital system for student planners and hall passes called My Homework for all high school students. This system would come as a cost savings to the district as it is less expensive than purchasing agenda books for the high school students. And non-agenda items that were discussed. The African-American curriculum has been updated and now includes literature to enhance learning across grade levels. The Road Bath and New Jersey Department of Education Restart and Recovery Plan is available for the public to review. As far as full-day kindergarten registration, currently there are 264 students registered with 70 additional applications in process. The district is looking at having approximately 21 kindergarten classes. Pre-K registration, an update. The district is now accepting both three and four-year-old students. And the district's COVID resources and information pages are continually being updated. So that is all I have for my report. Mr. Santilli, do you have anything that you would like to add?
Yes, thanks, Ms. Summer, and happy birthday. I just wanted to give a new update in regards to full-day kindergarten. Prior to getting on to executive session earlier, the number now fully enrolled is 280 students. So that's just a quick update there. I also wanted to just also share and highlight that we did have a number of board member questions that had come in, so I wanted to be able to make sure that I covered some of those. So first, some questions in regards to the theater teacher for full-day kindergarten. Ultimately, one of the questions was about really just focusing on the rationale for the theater teacher. Ultimately, really the focus here is for a lot of different purposes, but mainly because of, of our focus on meeting our board goal and our goals for literacy. There's a strong literacy component within theater, not just for reading and writing, but also ultimately for even speaking. So all those things, you know, will help us meet those goals. The question came in also about data and, of course, you know, since this hasn't existed yet, we are, you know, excited to see what the data would hold in the future. But based off of some research that we've, we've conducted when we started to explore this. And I know Dr. Kadetsky, along with our, our supervisor of language arts, Ms. Moss, have, have worked closely in regards to making sure that they have conducted the research in regards to making sure that this particular position is going to meet our needs and help us move forward. But some of those things talked about, you know, for instance, decoding, you know, text. And, and, you know, at the elementary level, that is a very important skill that would be accomplished, would be our hopes. And of course, data would be gathered in that regard. In regards to longitudinal benefits was another question. Ultimately, this isn't necessarily about the idea of, you know, having theater right now and an expanding theater. It's the idea of utilizing the theater position to help us capitalize on some of those early literacy needs, learn more about expression and applied meaning in text, things along those natures. Very important skills at the, at the early elementary level. The other question that came in was in regards to trying to infuse, I guess, Reader's Theater in daily instruction. And ultimately, you know, this is something that we feel would be better off stand, as a standalone. It reinforces skills and certainly adds expression to help students convey meaning that is needed at the elementary level. So ultimately, really the focus would be is having a standalone teacher to be able to serve in that role. Another question that came in was in regards to focusing on, on the learning gap and the fact that we were in a closure. And would this be a position that would be something that we want to implement now? So ultimately, we feel as if, like, you know, depending upon what happens in the fall, theater may actually be a little bit easier to maintain because, let's face it, we're kind of looking at it through the lens of, we really need the students and of course, their voices. That is part of, of really what theater would do, allow students to, of course, express themselves, but literacy is a piece of that. So we thought that that would be also a good component. Another question came in in regards to our African-American curriculum. And one of the questions was about really the, when it was updated, the process that was done, things along those lines. So the curriculum was updated about two years ago. And it was really updated to meet the Amistad mandate, especially at the elementary grades. Also, books were selected for a read-aloud strategy and then they were put into social studies projects to go along with that particular book. I'd also probably want to note as well that we had just gone through a full CUSAC review. And I know that through our, you know, our review, they were very pleased with that component within our curriculum as well. Another question in conjunction with that was, when's African-American curriculum taught? It is, it does start in kindergarten and additional lessons are provided, of course, during Black History Month and around Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s holiday. Is it embedded in all content areas or separate? It actually is a combination of both. Currently, right now, social studies at the elementary grades is a content area that teaches African-American culture. So that occurs at the elementary level. But of course, we are working with our, our language arts supervisor to help expand that and especially to expand books at the elementary level to infuse that further. At the high school, English has an African-American literature elective and then also, social studies has an African-American studies elective, which we're pleased to say that is a dual-credit class with Stockton University. The high school, middle schools also have units and really what it comes down to is that there are elements that are taught within, for instance, some things that as a former social studies teacher, I would, I would teach back in the day and it was things like free-fist compromise in addition to the Civil War and slavery and the colonies and Reconstruction and things like Harlem Renaissance and civil rights. Those are all things that are being covered, especially at the middle level. What resources were used to update the African-American curriculum? Obviously, the Amistad Commission was the main resource because that was the mandate that we were looking to make sure that we, we covered during that update two years ago. However, we also did take a look at other resources that were out there, things like Scholastic, PBS, Random Acts of Kindness, Teaching Tolerance. They all lend to meeting the needs of that curriculum. And then there was a question that came in also in regards to community partnerships. And of course, you know, we're always open to new partnerships and we're looking to expand. Right now, we do have a partnership, as mentioned, with Stockton University. It is a dual-credit, it is a dual-credit class. And basically, the other thing that they're looking to do is explore where those students would have an opportunity to also go down to the middle schools and work with eighth-grade students as well. And there's also a possibility, we're hoping that this is going to occur, that the college board may also add an AP-level African-American history elective. If that petition is successful, then of course, we would look to bring that to the curriculum committee as a new offering for the high school. In addition, there are certainly novels that we, we've included and they were provided to the board. And, and, and then, you know, other community partnerships, of course, will be explored as well. Scrolling through some of the other board member questions, there were questions in regards to the virtual learning survey. I'm not going to go through each of them. However, we did provide responses to the board in regards to some of the slides that Dr. Virchio had presented at the start of the meeting for the public. And we did provide some clarification with a handful of data that was presented there. And then, finally, I believe there was an additional correct question in regards to the My Homework, basically, Hall Pass system that the high school was looking to implement. And one of the questions was about the recurring cost. The recurring cost would really only be the slight license. However, it is a savings compared to us ordering the hard copies or print edition of agenda books that we typically use as our planner and also, and also, of course, for our pass system. So if we do go to, you know, the digital system, the other question was, would there be a conflict with district cellphone use? And, you know, we did take a look at the cellphone policy and ultimately, we do not feel that there'd be a conflict per se. It is at the teacher discretion and of course, at administrator's discretion in regards to the use of the cellphone. And this particular tool, a cellphone is not required. Matter of fact, a teacher can certainly utilize this system in their classroom to administer a pass, for instance, just on their PC. A student doesn't even need to have anything with them in the hallway, for instance, except maybe their student ID. Because it's really the person in the hallway that would have access to the system as well, to be able to see who has a pass at that time and, and where they're going, whether they were going to the bathroom or maybe they were visiting guidance or they were going to the nurse. That is captured in a dashboard. Certain people, especially those that are on duty, would have access to. So again, it really is a tool that we feel would bring us actually forward and help us meet the needs of, of also tracking how often, for instance, students are out of class. The other component to that was the planner piece. All of that is not just linked with our infinite campus student system, our student data system, but also it allows parents to be able to access as well. So students are able to complete or write down, for instance, the homework that they have and, you know, that they normally would do in our agenda book. They're able to do that now through this system. Parents can end up seeing it and parents would also actually be able to see how often students might be leaving class and, and going to different locations. Again, it allows us to see and track instructional time. And when students are leaving class, it really kind of gives us a gauge on how often they may be out of class and be able to address those issues as needed. I believe that concludes any board member questions that would be related to curriculum at this time.
Very good.
I have an additional, Mr. President, I would like to clarify something.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Mr. Santilli, when we go back to the cellphones, is this system, the digital Hall Passes, going to be dependent upon cellphones? I mean, is it something that the cells are going to be used for during the course of day, during instructional and non-instructional time? Do you have students when, open bathrooms, breaks or classes? Are they going to key in through a computer when they leave the classroom and then key into another computer when they arrive at that classroom? Or is it going to be pinging off of their cellphones during the course of the day?
No. So actually, I know that this was a conversation we had and to clarify, technically, a cellphone is not needed. technically, a cell phone is not needed, um, to utilize this tool. Um, it is certainly an option. It certainly can be, uh, can be used. However, it's not required, um, for the tool to be successful. So for instance, um, let's just say, um, I was the teacher and you were the student. If you were going to go to the guidance office or to the nurse, um, as a teacher, I could use my PC and I could actually put that in the system. Um, and then it would be trapped in that system. Administration, for instance, and hall monitors would have access to be able to view that. So then if they see you in the hallway and you had your student ID, they would be able to say, oh, good morning, you know, Mike, how are you? I can, you know, and so on and so forth, but they would be able to very easily see that you were on your way to the nurse and so on. Um, there'd be no reason.
So essentially, essentially, the student doesn't need to even have the cell phone. You're going to be able to determine who they are, um, based on remembering who they are. I mean, you have, we have 2,300 kids in the high school. How's everybody going to know what student's what? Are they going to have their ID on them with their name? How are you going to know who Johnny is or who Jane is or who Mary is? How are you going to determine that? Uh, whereas before, if a student was carrying an actual hall pass in their hand or a book, you could stop and check and verify these things. So maybe you could elaborate on that a little bit more.
So, um, so one of the, uh, many hats that I wear is, um, emergency management. So we do work very closely with the high school, um, to make sure that students are provided IDs. Um, and that is for all of our students at the high school. Um, so they are provided student IDs and that is one of the requirements that they are to have that on them and accessible at all times. Um, so if you were in the hallway, then that would be, um, how we'd be able to make sure we'd meet those needs.
Okay, so we don't, we don't need the cell phone then. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That, that, that's all.
Any, uh, any other board member comment or questions in the, uh, curriculum area?
I do.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, so really quickly about the digital hall pass, since we were on that. Um, you had mentioned that teachers would be able to input, uh, the requests of the student if they're using the lavatory or, you know, going to the nurse or things like that. So would teachers then have to stop lecturing or teaching so that they could input it to the new system? So that the people in the hallways can track the peo- the students in the hallways? Um, don't we have hallway monitors and, you know?
So, so, um, yeah, I mean, basically, it would be no different than me stopping. I think it really comes down to classroom management. So for instance, if you had a hard copy agenda book, I would need to stop as a teacher to fill that out. It would be no different than me having to actually just put it in the system. So I think it really would come down to, um, and like any tool we, we basically provide. Um, I would make sure that I work with the high school to provide professional development, to make sure that the staff is aware of, of some best practices. Um, I know that this particular, um, you know, component or, or this particular tool, um, was very good in regards to, um, making sure that, that they worked with the team at the high school in regards to their presentation and information they provided. Uh, and I know that they would provide resources as well, but we would make sure that anything we put into place, we offered some of those best practices. Um, but I guess that's the best way I look at it. I think that if I was a classroom teacher, that once I knew about the tool, I would figure in my classroom how it would work best for me and my students. Um, because of course, every classroom is different, uh, every teacher functions differently. Um, and that's why even, even referring back to Mr. Price's question about the cell phone. Um, you know, cell phones in the classroom are at teacher discretion as well. So even, um, we have teachers that use them as instructional tools and we have teachers that don't want to see them at all, which we respect.
So I think that, um, my concern right now is that, um, teachers are already being tasked with using so many different, uh, computer programs. And if we go virtual again, this expense will be useless because virtually, we don't have to track where they're go- when, you know, there's no hall pass necessary if we're virtually teaching. So I don't know, I don't necessarily think that this is something we need to do this year because we have so many other things that, um, are vital to us just existing. We're asking teachers now, you know, kids will have to social distance, they're going to have to have masks on, they're going to have to do this. And now they're going to have to classroom management, take a ten, you know, um, use this new agenda system. It just seems like we're adding more onto teachers that are already stretched pretty thin. But I wanted to go back and I apologize, I am going to take a few minutes here. Um, as far as the theater teacher is concerned, I love that you want to incorporate, um, art into literacy. Um, teaching kids how to read is my favorite thing about teaching. So I appreciate that you're thinking out of the box for EHD and you want to bring in a teacher that, um, will provide public speak, public speak opportunities for our students and, um, and lots of different things, expression and, you know, uh, character studies. That's wonderful. However, in the questions that I had posed, I'm more concerned with, we're going to have one teacher, and I think we said we had 21 kindergarten classes. So we have one teacher who's going to teach theater to 21 kindergarten classes for one year. And we have no longitudinal data on how one year of theater, being exposed to theater increases students literacy. Because we're not talking about they're going to be exposed from it, from kindergarten through third grade or kindergarten through fifth grade. We're talking one year. And as a kindergarten teacher, I think I have a perspective because I'm in the classroom and I know what we do and I know how to teach kids to read. Based on the scores that we've seen in the last few Board of Ed meetings, we need intervention teachers. So why aren't we doing, say, two part-time intervention teachers to address maybe our first grade classrooms? Because our first grade classrooms, the class sizes are enlarged and because we're doing full day kindergarten, why aren't we giving tools to help kids who are already struggling with reading? Because we have awesome teachers in our district and I'm pretty sure that they're already implementing many of these things just in their normal instruction. So I feel like I applaud you for trying to present, um, a different way to bring arts to our kids. But to do it for one year and then not have it, it seems like a waste of resources. And, and as a teacher and a kindergarten teacher who does all this for a living, I find that it's a waste for this year. We have COVID. We have kids who, you know, are going to have huge learning gaps. And we're talking about bringing a theater teacher in. I can't be the only one who is like shaking their head a little bit. So the data you showed me, sorry, I'm not finished. The data you showed me and the research you showed me was based on theater studies over a long period of time. So that's why I asked about the longitudinal. It's not enough to say, well, we're hoping it will help. We need to help our students based on what we know works. RTI, intervention teachers, and getting them to fill those reading gaps that exist. Because by the time they get to third grade, as we saw in the slides last week, by the time they get to third grade, they are not learning to read anymore. Fourth grade, they are reading to learn. And when there are gaps which our students have, they do not catch up. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, I can address that. And, um, I think that, you know, as an administrator and assistant superintendent, I certainly, um, you know, respect your position and, and, and your comment. I would also offer that, um, I think that this was a unique and creative idea for us to be able to try to capitalize on a different way to, um, uh, to provide, uh, literacy, uh, through really a related arts class. So one thing that I, I want to just also reiterate is that we would be, we would be basically having to fill a position in order to service the students based off of our scheduling with related arts. So while I don't disagree that, I would absolutely take intervention teachers across the board all day long. I absolutely would support that. I'm also trying to find ways to think outside the box, work with, uh, work with my supervisors and administrative team to be able to then come up with ways that we can provide more literacy instruction through this creative opportunity to be able to help them meet the needs of the kids. If we didn't do this, and I'm not saying by any means that an art teacher or music teacher cannot provide, um, us the same level of, of literacy, um, for early intervention. Um, but I think that this is an opportunity for us to attempt to do that in a creative way by still servicing our students. Because regardless, I need to fill that position, um, with a related arts teacher. And that's why we chose to try to go in this direction, um, to be able to collect that data, to be able to then say, hopefully, it's going to have a positive impact on literacy moving forward at their, at the early grade levels.
Uh, Mr. President, may I make a suggestion possibly?
Sure.
Having been on the, at the meeting with the curriculum committee. Um, maybe we need to bring Dr. Kodeski in to have him make the presentation regarding this theater person. So that we can hear some of his rationale. Steve did a great job, I thought, but maybe there's even more that he would like to add. I know one of the points he made, uh, last week was that the state does have standards for theater, uh, that I didn't know about until he mentioned it last week, that there are state standards for theater beginning in kindergarten. And that he, they did study a couple of districts, I believe, in North Jersey that are doing this. Am I right, Steve, on that? Think he said that. And, uh, I think he also said that, of course, not that this is very important to us, but there are other countries in Europe and all that are doing some similar programs. So I know it's out of the box, kind of, I was impressed with the creativity part. I certainly am concerned about the literacy. And as Steve says, if we don't do this, we still need an art teacher because we have, it's in our budget and it's part of the scheduling that are going to be needed in kindergarten. So we'll have to fight, if we want to do any intervention folks in first grade, second grade, that would be additional on the budget or some other where area that we would have to look at. So just my comment. Thank you.
So I think the benefits of theater is, I mean, everyone can understand that it, the data suggests it's very helpful. Meshing left and right brain into one, you know, contributes to more learning growth. So I'm not arguing the, the, the point of theater and its impacting, its impactfulness. What I'm saying is that it, is it, is now the right time? And I know we had an art teacher. So am I hearing correctly? We had an art teacher retire, I believe. So are we changing, would they normally be getting art, but now we're trying theater? Is that, um, understand correctly? Okay, and I am concerned to, to, to take it further. We're going to have one teacher for 21 classes. And everyone knows with teaching, you have to build rapport with your students. You need to know their names. How will one teacher be able to effectively impact 21 classes of kids?
Maybe Steve can get that scheduled. Do you have it in front of you that, that Mark shared with us? If not, I have it.
I'd, let me go into the folder. I'd have to pull.
Yeah, I have two days at Davenport. Um, if I'm, if I'm right, I think it was, uh, one day at Swift, two days at Davenport, two days at Slay Ball for a just kindergarten, for that one teacher.
May I make a comment? I know we have a curriculum committee that goes through all of this and we have spent a half an hour just on these questions. And I'm wondering, Christie, why that wasn't addressed in the committee meeting? And it, that way, when it comes to us, we have a clear picture of everything that's going on. So I'm wondering why, um, you know, you're not clear on everything since you're part of the curriculum committee.
Well, Marita, I'm not clear on it because I wasn't at the curriculum committee. However, I did follow everything, spoke to the chair of Erst and, and did my own research. So while, um, in some committees, you might be able to sit there for an hour and feel confident and understand and feel ready. In this particular issue, I don't have that comfort. And being an educator and doing research, I came up with a lot of questions. So I apologize if I've taken so much time, but it is the work session. And I believe this is the time where we do hash out some differences. So, um, does that answer your question?
Yes, but I think, um, the one part that you're missing just a little bit is we would have an art teacher in there and art teacher retired. And now we've just taken a little bit different direction. So otherwise, we would have another art teacher in there.
So I'm at this point, uh, going to suggest, and I respect everyone's opinion. And, uh, certainly, the work session, uh, is a place where we hash things out. That's why we have a work session. So all discussions and, you know, opinions, um, are, uh, are welcomed. So what I would suggest, and, uh, also, um, Mrs. Summer did excuse herself because it's her birthday. So, um, you know, normally she would, uh, as committee chair would weigh in at this point as well. So I think, you know, the, the committee has recommended that it move forward. And we can, uh, explore, uh, if we want to have Dr. Kodeski come in and, and speak with the board. I'll, I'll leave that to the chair.
Uh, Mr. Castellano, uh, Mr. Kodeski is, um, calling my cell phone repeatedly. So I think he's trying to call. Um, but I, that's your call. Do you want to have him discuss this now or set a future meeting?
Well, we'll be at, we'll be at public comment before you know it. Does that work? And we'll do it there?
Yes, he had bobs, sorry, okay.
For, does that work for everyone? Let's get through our, um, we have our, our policy, um, committee report next. Um, looking, I, I know that, uh, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, oh, oh, I skipped. Oh, excuse me, excuse me, I got you. Yes, I skipped personnel. So I'm going to first see if, uh, uh, Dr. Charlton has anything for us on, on personnel for, uh, public session. We do have to take action on personnel, uh, then policy, and then we're going to go to public comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, in committee tonight, we discussed the fact that there are numerous, uh, interview processes taking place across the district for our teaching positions, support staff positions, administrative positions. Uh, and so I just want to thank the board and for the teamwork approach in terms of looking to take action in both work session and regular session during the summer. It really helps tremendously as we try to onboard people quickly and get everybody ready to meet students on the first day of school. Uh, because there's a lot of paperwork to go through, state processes and get everybody approved. So I really do appreciate the board's cooperation with that. Uh, and with that, we are looking to take action on personnel items seven two through seven seven tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Terry. Um, so I am going to ask, uh, we are going to take action on personnel, uh, tonight, as everyone knows. So I'm going to ask for a motion on seven point two through seven point seven, please.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have, um, Mrs. Sullivan and then Mr. Del Barca. Any discussion on personnel? May we have, may we have roll call, please?
Sorry, I was muted having my own fun. Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis, as, um, not here at the time, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd also had to excuse herself. Mr. Price?
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, uh, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer? Oh, she left, sorry. Mrs. Slaggy?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird? Yep, and Mr. Castellano.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I, I do understand that, um, uh, Ms. Ms. Gilbert Floyd had to excuse herself as well. And perhaps, uh, Steve, you can just give us a quick, uh, update on these two policies and we'll go ahead to our, uh, public comment.
Okay, Mr. Castellano, thank you. Um, these are, um, just two policies. Uh, one is a, a policy, actually, one is a policy and one is a reg, um, that, um, needs board approval. It is, um, up for a second reading. Um, so they would be, uh, 1642 for earned sick leave and then regulation 1642 for earned sick leave again for their second readings because they are new policies and regs.
Okay, very good. Any, uh, questions, comments on the policy? These are both second readings, so. Uh, hearing none, we have our, our board calendar is on here and we know we just made a change tonight. And again, we may have to make some more. Um, NJ SBA, I just wanted to point out that, uh, Mr. Del Barca has been. NJ SBA, I just wanted to point out that Mr. Del Barca has been participating in county association leadership meetings and bringing back helpful information to us. Lou, is there anything that you'd like to say tonight during public session?
Well, thank you, Pete. Just, it's been really interesting. Everything that you've heard tonight from Kim regarding what's going on in the state and the planning to open, every other district in the state's doing the same thing. When I meet with, I met last week, I had the opportunity to be part of a meeting with the new interim commissioner. But I heard yesterday that the new commissioner is going to be appointed very soon and they didn't give us any idea who it is. So we'll have a new commissioner shortly. But even at the department level, they don't know what they're doing and many, they'll say, we're looking into it. We'll get back to you. So they're just as much confused as everyone else. I was impressed with this guy. His name is Kevin Damer. He seems to know what he's talking about and he had his people around him to help him. But again, his point was that the road back is a living document. There's going to be updates coming out from the Department of Ed very shortly regarding the road back. So there'll be some changes made and some new information. And the biggest point was, that I got out of all of this was, and I think, Pete, you said it nicely earlier in the meeting, we all have to work together, but we also have to support administration. So when the recommendations come out from some administration, all of us have to be on board because we need to have that united front. So that's going to be down the road a piece, but I think that that's really important. So my whole thing is I'm going to continue. We meet every week. I continue to, I'll send you words to Pete and Kim and Chandra and Amy Elko. And if anybody wants to see any of that, I can certainly share it with you. But basically, it's questions, lots of questions from board members and no answers really at this time. The smaller districts seem to have a better handle because they're small. But those big districts are lost, I think, to be honest with you. They're trying very hard. Everybody's working hard, but a lot of talk about hybrids. A lot of the districts are doing hybrid situations, so that's something to keep in mind. That's all. Thank you for the moment, Pete.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for bringing that information back to us. Word on the street, Lou, is that you're going to be the next commissioner.
I think they don't want to go with anybody at my age, to be honest with you.
You're getting better, man. You're getting better. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead to the public comment, which will be three minutes in length on any topic. We do not comment on personnel or litigation. And in the event that a comment is, or question is complicated, it may be that one of our administrative staff will have to get back to you. So we'll go ahead to our, our public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. And as a reminder to the public, you can call 609-653-0100, extension 1417 during the public comments portion. Do not leave a message for public comment as it will not be received. Continue to call until you reach a live operator or moderator. And due to call volume, it may require several attempts. We anticipate a 30-second delay between live streaming and when you get this message, so we will wait. There'll be short calls. I've just been told that call forwarding isn't working right now, but I do have a direct call, so we're going to take this. All right, Egg Harbor Township Public Comment. Name and address, please.
My name is Mark Kodeski, 148 Blackman Road, Egg Harbor Township, New Jersey, and I'm the supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts for the district.
Go ahead with your comment.
I just wanted to respond to any questions or ideas that you had about our kindergarten theater position. I got a general grasp of the questions and we did, and last week I was fortunate enough to present to curriculum committee. And I know some of the concerns revolve around, you know, why are we doing this for one year and not continuing? And the main idea is we have to have specials for the kindergartners because operationally, they provide a prep for the teachers, but also because we want to deliver a well-rounded related arts experience. In my domain, in Fine and Performing Arts, our state national standards are music, visual art, and dance and theater. And we completely ignore dance and theater curriculally until possibly 10th grade when they can take it as an elective. So I wanted to introduce it somewhere at the urging of our theater teachers and also in response to our literacy goals for the districts. Our kids are coming in with a big deficit. I see it firsthand as a parent and I see it as a supervisor who is in every building, every elementary school. And the curriculum and the certification that exists for New Jersey, for theater ed in New Jersey at the elementary level, is so tied into our literacy standards as far as if you don't understand a word, being able to act it out, being able to have empathy and understand characters and addressing social emotional concerns. There's a lot of, a lot of research that backs it up and other countries are doing it very successfully and schools in North Jersey are doing it successfully. And I thought, you know, our thinking was when we were designing the special sport kindergarten that this would be a good one for these kids coming in who really have issues with communication and literacy and reading. And the other hope and thought for this position as well wasn't necessarily to plant the seed to continue all the way through is to, you know, talk about improvisation, social emotional learning. It just addresses a lot of needs. And I apologize if I'm a little winded. I ran in from outdoor band practice because I know this is important and I always enjoy being able to address the board's concerns. So as far as coverage, one day at Swift, two days at Sleigh Ball, and two days at Davenport, prep, lunch, and travel period. I think we're getting a lot of bang for the buck for one entry-level teacher and it is a certificated position. You do have to hold a position, a certificate in New Jersey for theater education. And we have people who want to apply and who want to do this job for us. And I promise you, you will see and notice a difference and we need to get on this before other schools do it. I want to be the first. I want EHD to lead the way in using the arts to enhance literacy, not just to get teachers to prep.
Okay, thank you. Hold on the line for now.
Thank you. I want to thank Dr. K for your, very much.
And it's Alana County Pops, not EHD band practice, just for those who are concerned.
Thank you for your comments. Very much appreciated, Dr. K, shedding light on the issue for us.
And the line is working. We have tested it in between. It may have been user error for the person trying to call in. So we'll leave it open, we'll leave public comment open again for the next caller. Mr. Castellano, this has now been up for a minute for the viewers to see, so at this point, you can close public comment if you wish.
Okay, so we will close the public comment. We thank everyone who may be listening or watching. And of course, we thank Dr. K for calling in with his comment as well. And so at this point, we'll look for any comments from board members.
Pete, I have something.
Sure.
The hall pass that was to replace the agenda books, I believe it's like half the price of agenda books. And if we got agenda books, just in case the students go to school, then we'd be paying for books that the dates wouldn't really matter because they're not going to be in school. So by using this hall pass, it would be based on whether they're in school. Perhaps if we don't use it, the company would give us another year to use it without charging us. But if we ordered agenda books at twice the price of the hall pass, I think, I think we're saving money and I just want to say that I think it's a very good idea to go that way.
Thank you very much. Any other board members?
Mr. Castellano, I have a comment. Do I have it, Pete? My internet connection has been a little bit spotty here tonight, so I hope.
Mike, you have the mic.
But I would just like to say, great job. Mike, I have the mic. Thank you. I would just like to say, great job with the presentation tonight. And I'm looking forward tomorrow. I'll be attending the the virtual attendance meeting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock AM. So I'm going to make sure that I tune in and participate with the road back tomorrow morning. And I would just like to, again, congratulate the class of 2020. We are EHD strong. Everybody have a great night and we'll see you next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other board members, comments? Okay, I'll be, I'll be attending a committee as well. I'll be at our athletics and fine and performing arts. It was tough to pick one committee. They're all of interest to me, as I'm sure they were to, you know, all of us. But, you know, we had to pick one and so I'll be attending tomorrow night as well and I imagine most of us will. And, you know, again, we're, we're going to have a very busy summer. So I'm going to ask for, you know, again, everyone's indulgence, everyone's cooperation. Let's be flexible in our, with our calendars because we have, you know, we have a job to do. At this point, I'm going to see if there's final comments from our administration.
No, I think we, everyone wrapped it up. Thank you very much and I think you got a lot of work done tonight and looking forward to being on that road with you. Thank you.
Very good. So I'm going to thank everyone, administration, board members for a job well done, a very good meeting, good discussion. And, you know, listen, the road back and that's, that's job one right now. So with that, I'm going to ask if there's no further comment for a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Mr. Price, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, got it. Got it? Chandra, we, we are adjourned by show of hands, acclamation. Good night, everyone. Stay safe and we'll see you next week.